For funding that project. Just to also let you know that, you know, one of our goals in the CIP is to really incorporate a lot of things we learned from council in the goal-setting session. I mean, to us, that's kind of the start of our whole process. It's that goal-setting, it's developing and approving the CIP, then that gets implemented in the budget, and then we, you know, eventually get to an approval of a budget. So it really kind of all starts at that goal-setting. You know, one of the things we're looking at when we develop the CIP is infrastructure maintenance. Want to make sure we're keeping up on streets and sewer, stormwater. Council did talk about how we may use flood reserve funding for some of the projects. In the CIP is still, we are listing a couple of things still from the flood recovery from the 2016 flood, permeable alley program, you'll see, still listed in there, and our annual street repair program that's funded by the local option sales tax. The council did talk about having some special work sessions throughout the year, and I know one of them was about stormwater, water quality, which would include that discussion about the permeable alley. So I know that's something that's going to be coming up, that the council really kind of wants to focus one session just on that whole issue. We also, when we talk about selling bonds, you'll hear us talk a lot about GO funding, and sometimes we say that and I forget to describe what that means. So what that means is, the GO stands for general obligation. So again, it's how we pay for a lot of projects. We sell bonds to fund those, and then, of course, we have to then pay back those bonds through principal and interest that we levy property tax for every year. So we try to, in an effort to keep our property tax rate level, we try to issue only enough bonds that would be replacement debt. And the other thing that we want to make sure and do is leave plenty of debt capacity for us. And what we mean by debt capacity is, under state code, you can only have outstanding debt that equals 5% of your assessed valuations. So we want to make sure that we're not using 95% of that, because if there was something major that came along, we would be capped and wouldn't be able to issue bonds. So we always talk about that, one of the things, and you'll see we're far from this, but one of the things when we developed the CIP is we always want to make sure we at least have room in that capacity, so if something was ever needed, we could issue bonds. One of the other things I just want to highlight again, you'll see a lot of different projects on the CIP, but I know sometimes in the past, there's been a question about quality-of-life projects. You know, sometimes we focus on the streets and the sewer and the stormwater, the infrastructure, and maybe feel like it gets too heavy on that, and we're not doing any of the quality-of-life projects. So I just kind of add it up real quickly in the CIP, in that area of the rec and parks and that, and it's 7.5 million. Now, that's a very small percentage. I understand the 270 million, but keep in mind, those are the things that are probably going to have to be paid for by general fund money, general obligation bonds, you know, versus sewer projects being paid by sewer rates. And also, it doesn't include things that I could maybe throw in that bucket, like Whitewater course. You know, those are some things, you know, maybe wayfinding signage. They're on the CIP, they don't happen to be in that area, but they would be probably what most people consider a quality-of-life project, too. So, just a little overview of it, of how we kind of, what we're working on to develop the CIP. So just going to highlight a few projects for people, just for everybody's benefit, so they know. I know all of you sitting up there actually got a book that has the big CIP schedule in it, plus a detail of all the projects. After we're done tonight, we'll get that on our website, so if anybody has any questions, they can sure go look that up. And right now, it would have been included in the council packet, too. So if anybody wanted to go see those, it would be in the council packet. So, just to talk again about some of the projects, one of them is the library maker space. The other thing that I always find kind of funny since I've been here is that not only do the numbers change on the CIP, but the names of the projects constantly change. I know when I first started here, I'd have to go down the engineering and say, "Okay, I don't know, but this project isn't on the CIP," and they'd have to tell me, "Oh, well, it's now called this." So you'll see in the parentheses, I put "co-lab." Now, library is actually talking about their "co-lab," not a maker space. So the timing of that is, they're hoping to get that completed in fiscal year '19. You'll see it's about $177,000. There's some general fund money that'll be used toward it, but they were awarded a gaming grant of $50,000 to use for that project. Also, the Friends of the Library and the Library Fund sitting in the Community Foundation will also help pay for this project. This has been in the library's strategic plan for the past few years, one of their goals that they wanted to do. They're already getting started on some design work. And actually, it'll be, you know, kind of a neat project, first project for our new director, which I'll take the opportunity. Jay Robinson is here, our new library director. If those of you who haven't met him yet, he started-
December 14.
There you go, December 14.
Still green in your ears.
So welcome to Jay. Next, we have our Cedar River recreational bank improvements. On previous CIPs, that was maybe combined into one big project. This year in the CIP, we actually split it out. So there's this project, the actual bank improvements. The very next project we'll talk about is the actual Whitewater piece of it. And then you also see on the funding, unfunded list would have been, you know, if we really, really wanted to do the major project and change the dam and change that whole look of how that river looks, that's actually on the unfunded portion. So we are, right now, showing on the CIP for fiscal year '22. Our hope would be is that we could get a gaming grant for it. We'll also want to coordinate that with the next project we're going to go over is the Whitewater. We would want to do those in coordination. We wouldn't want to do one, and, you know, maybe a few later, just come back, a few years later, come back and try to do the other one. We'd want to do that together. And actually, in a committee meeting here, probably coming up in the near future, maybe March, the council will actually hear more about where we're at with that process. The consultant will be here to tell us about that. So the next one I mentioned is the Whitewater portion of it. You see, it's a 2 million project. Again, that same timing of fiscal year '22, we'd be looking at using, we want to try to focus on a private match for that project to happen. That's the council. Actually, we had a priority work session about the CIP, and that's one of the things that was discussed at that. If we feel like we can attain that private match, then we'd be looking at whether we would use flood reserve money then to be the match by the city. But again, that wasn't decided. I think we have a ways to go yet, especially if we have a private match as part of that. So again, that was just one of the things that was discussed at the council work session. I should point out, too, that because of that private match, it, the CIP, it probably got bumped back a couple of years. If you'd pull out last year's CIP, probably looks like, "Well, wait a minute, why did we delay this project?" Well, we know if there's a private match, there's no way that that's going to get done, you know, right away this next fiscal year. It might take a few years to do that. Next project is the Cedar River Levy Improvement. And here, you can see the timing for fiscal year '18, '19. The actual total project cost is 6.7 million. You won't necessarily see that on your CIP, because we've actually already spent some money for that. We did get a flood mitigation sales tax revenue grant that's going to pay for a big portion of that. It took us a while to get the approval from the Corps of Engineers, but we're finally there, so construction has started. But then we will be cash-flowing a portion of that sales tax grant. I mentioned to some people before, it seems like we talk a lot of times about the same projects, but when they're the big ones on the CIP, you kind of feel like you have to talk about those. Annual Street Repair Program. Again, something, it's not new. We've been doing this for 26 years, so not new. But I think it's something that people are always interested in knowing about, is how are the local option sales tax dollars used? And, you know, we have been doing street reconstruction, street resurfacing. We collect about 4.8 million annually to put towards those street projects. When it was first passed in '92, we collected about $2 million a year, so it kind of shows where that's, how that's grown since then. You also see in the CIP that we tend to just kind of always have a same number that we had every year, that we kind of planned for. You'll see in the CIP, there's a couple of years that actually the dollar amount's a little lower, because that is accounting for that we know have, we have some other big projects that are using local option sales tax. West First Street, as an example, that we had to adjust that because of that. Next one I just wanted to highlight was number 80, Green Hill Road and South Main intersection. I just know there's been a lot of discussion about this lately, whether it's council or P&amp;Z, so thought it was appropriate to highlight that one. Do have it on there for timing of fiscal year '21, with a $1.6 million cost, a million of that coming from local option sales tax, the remaining from general obligation bonds. Again, we're continuing to look at the intersection, even though maybe that's not scheduled for '20 or '21. Just going to continue to look at it, analyze it, you know, look to see if there's any short-term, low-cost improvements we can do. But again, we're just still looking at that and trying to figure that out. Number 82, Highway 58 and Viking Road. You'll see timing of that, fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '20. It is a $32 million project, with the city's portion being right at 11 million. The council did approve that agreement with the DOT about our share that we would be paying for that project. My understanding is from engineering that the bid letting will be February 20th, with construction to follow. So obviously, a big project that we'll want to make sure and keep the public updated about the progress, where it's at, and what's going on with that project. Main Street, number 84. Again, project that there's been discussion about on the CIP. We pushed that back to fiscal year '21 to '23, with a total project cost of 7.5 million. Now, again, this is a perfect example of talking about the CIP is just a plan, because this is just looking, you know, we haven't even determined exactly what the design would be yet, so at this point, it's just estimating 7.5 million. We'd be looking at local option sales tax, paying for actually redoing the street part of it, but if we were going to do other things that went with it, you know, whether it's sidewalks, trails, some of that, then obviously, we'd have to use bond money for that. Or, you know, maybe there's hope we could get a grant funding for some safety improvements. And again, this was just one of those that we felt with the timing of other large projects going on, I mean, you know, with staffing, funding, and just coordination with other things being, you know, streets being closed and big other projects going on, that we just felt was appropriate, that probably just needed to step back and push this project back a couple of years. However, I think the plan is to do some temporary asphalt overlay to it, to extend the life for at least another couple of years. We know that there's some pieces that, you know, people might feel need some repair work, so at least trying to do some short-term things until we can reconstruct it. West First Street, fiscal year '18 and '20, total project cost of 15.5 million. You see the State of Iowa funding of 8.1. Our share would be coming from local option sales tax, bond funds, obviously, there'd be some utility costs, that's the sewer fund and CFU would be paying for as relates to those. This is a 50-50 cost share for the eligible items, so you have to kind of keep that in mind. The design's still ongoing, but they are getting ready to start the work of acquiring right away, hoping for a letting for Phase 1, maybe January of '19, and Phase 2, January of '20. So that's where we're at with West First Street. Number 97, Public Safety Building, timing of fiscal year '18, '19, looking at a cost of 10.2 million. Again, a lot of discussion has been talked about with this, the fact that we, you know, looked ahead and actually were saving up for this project, and so not actually selling bonds to pay for it, but we've been saving it up from our general fund savings. The land was purchased this past summer for that project, and the contract for construction was approved by city council in December. So we're getting ready to start that big project. Number 145, another one that on the CIP is called Inclusive Park. I think now it's being called Place to Play, Playground. So, timing, fiscal year '18 and '20, total project cost of 900,000. Were approved for a gaming grant of 250,000. Had some citizens who did a great job of doing their own private fundraising and get that really started, so kudos to them for doing that. And I think one of those things is, they're going to continue to try to fundraise, so they can maybe do all the parts of the project. My understanding is, there's going to may be a couple phases to it, so they're hoping to continue to fundraise for that. And the design contract was approved by city council at the last meeting. Pickleball improvements, again. I know the pickleball group was here one night. So, again, planned for fiscal year '19, project cost of 150,000, and you can see that's shared between a gaming grant, the private fundraising, and then the city's portion will be general obligation funding that will do that. Pickleball group did fundraise to help actually move this project up in the CIP. The Park and Rec Commission recommended moving the pickleball courts to another location at Orchard Hill. So actually, the picture you see up here is different than what's in your book. I got that from Mark to show that it's really actually in a different spot on there, and actually, on the city council agenda tonight is that Park and Rec recommendation to do And then the last project I just said on here was Project 190. We are going to be, we've actually already started the process of doing specs for a new fire truck, and as you can imagine, those aren't cheap things to buy. So you can see the cost up there, 500,000, that we're estimating that that will be. Now, in saying all that, they do have a very long life, so even though the cost seems very high, they do have a long life. And that'll be funded with general obligation funding. So that's just kind of a highlight of some of the projects. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention, though, is, I didn't necessarily highlight specifically stormwater projects, but wanted to note that on the CIP, there's actually 18 projects on the CIP that use stormwater funding, which total about 4.1 million. Stormwater rates were actually set in '07, so we have gone, we're getting to the point almost 11 years of not doing anything with those rates, so we'll be looking at those rates. So obviously, the CIP will have an effect on what those rates may be, when you talk about 4.1 million on the CIP. So that's something we'll be looking at. Same thing with sewer projects. Didn't necessarily highlight specific sewer projects, but as we continue to develop the CIP, we always got to talk about sewer, because it happens to be, if you really pull it out, those are kind of some of the big dollar amounts listed on the CIP. So 20 projects on there that either use sewer revenue funds or sewer bond funding. Some of the big ones on there, Dry Run Creek, Nutrient Removal, Digestor Rehab, and they total 62 million on the CIP. So you can say just about the same number of stormwater projects, but quite a difference in the cost of those. Again, so the CIP will have to, you know, have some bond sales that go with those large projects, and of course, that will have an effect on rates. Parking projects, just wanted to note that, again, I know there's been some discussion about parking. You know, want to just look at, how can we continue to coordinate with Main Street about what we may do with some parking? So you'll see on the CIP, some projects related to parking, and how can we share in that funding of those projects? And, you know, at some point along the way, it's going to be that discussion of, do we need to look at a paid parking system again? So I shouldn't say again, but expand what we already have, or maybe what we used to have, and maybe that's decreased, and now do we have to increase that? So nothing's set right now, but again, it's just that knowing that as we continue to look at those, that there may be another impact as it relates to parking fees. Just a couple more things, and that is, just wanted to throw out a chart just to show kind of where a lot of the funding comes from. So when we talk about 271 million, where does a lot of that come from? We focus a lot, and when we talk to council, about the general obligation bond, just because that has that directing impact to property taxes, so of course, it's of interest to the people. But you can see up there, when we look at it, that's actually a somewhat small sliver in the piece of pie, but you can see right next to it, the purple one, the revenue bonds, that's where we're talking about sewer projects. That's 62 million of sewer projects. And then, you know, other things, you can see intergovernmental revenue, you know, that might be as it relates to local option sales tax, road use tax, you know, those would be some examples of intergovernment revenue. Again, talked about how we, you know, do talk about our GO debt limit and where we're at. You know, I talked about how we want to leave some capacity to make sure we have it. Well, you can see on this CIP that we're only using about, you know, 10%, going to go down to about 8% of our GO capacity, so no issue as it relates to our capacity that we have. Always just want to keep in mind, though, is, this is just our GO debt, so keep in mind that we have sewer bonds outstanding that we, that don't go against this. We also have our internal loans, where the sewer borrowed internally to help pay for some of their projects. So I always just want to mention that, because we do pride ourselves in our low debt rate, which is great, but I always just want to make sure people don't forget that we do have other outstanding debt that the sewer fund, for the most part, is having to pay So again, very low use of our debt limit. Issuance of new bonds would show a 0% increase in taxes because of the goal of using replacement debt, so again, use that policy as we develop this. So just a little bit, just to kind of summarize where about the process. You know, I mentioned that really this all kind of started in goal-setting, is where we really started the discussion about CIP. And then the council had a special work session on December 19th. Tonight, doing a presentation, kind of an overview, and if council or P&amp;Z members have questions, we'll actually do the formal public hearing at council. And once that's all said and done, then we take that fiscal year '19 column, and when we develop the budget, we'll actually take those projects and put them in to the budget for fiscal year '19. So with that, just going to go through if there's-
Thank you, Jennifer.
Questions or for me or the experts?
I'll open up the questions here in a moment. There's no formal action being taken tonight. This is just informational, so I'm going to hold off on any public comment, but clearly open it up to council or P&amp;Z. I did have sort of one, either question or insight, and you can help clarify. It seems like for some of these projects, it, I'm not sure it's policy or a trend whereby if there's an initial cost for something, council typically will also ask for those private dollars to be raised, and then maybe there's more merit to that. So it creates obviously a lower cost for the city, but then also, it might push it out a little bit, much like you indicated, I think, with the Whitewater.
Sure.
So is that, is that really a policy or a trend towards having those projects have the private funding side?
I think it's more of a trend than a policy, but in saying all that, we've had lots of projects here at the city that we've had that. The library, for instance, when we built the new library, there was a big private, you know, donation piece when we built the library. And I think, to answer your question, too, I think it can kind of work both ways. You know, some things, like with Whitewater, maybe it got pushed back, because that's a pretty substantial, you know, private one, but on the same token, we had other projects, maybe like Pickleball, who got to move up, because people really wanted that to happen, and, you know, took it upon themselves to raise some money and-
Plus the granting. The granting might have moved up.
Right.
Sure, great. I'll look around the dais here and ask for Mr. Blanford, you have a few questions?
Director Ridenbeck, thank you again.
Sure.
Just want to commend your staff, first of all, on all the work that you guys put into this. I think it's easy to forget how much time it takes to compile this, so thank you guys again for doing this for us.
And a lot of work to the engineers. They make up, as you saw, a lot of the projects on there.
Absolutely. I have just a couple of questions, if you don't mind. First of all, on project number eight, it's listed as capital asset software.
Sure.
We had some discussion and goal-setting about better methods to track progress on the CIP.
Okay.
Would this, or is it possible that the software might help us with that, or would there be an element to that?
I think we could. I think it's a couple of different things. It's that, that we wanted to, is there a better way to develop the CIP that's easier? It's a little cumbersome right now, from the standard, engineer can probably attest to that, you know, but in engineering and people in finance, it's a little cumbersome as we're using a lot of Excel spreadsheets. We'd love to be able to see if there's a better way to do that process. You know, an end result might also be, is there a better way than to how we can get it out for people to see on our website, do a finished project, product? But the other thing we want to look at, too, is, the other piece that maybe sometimes people forget about is, of course, when we do all these projects, what's the other thing we have to do? We have to capitalize them and depreciate them. And so, you know, what we'd like to look at, too, is there a better method of, how can we do that? You know, it's a somewhat manual system now. I mean, we have to kind of go through, see what we did for projects, then we have to manually enter them into our other software that does that and depreciates and all that. So, you know, we'd like to look at, again, is there any way that just makes that more efficient? You know, that is, a project's going on and we're tracking it, you know, one, it's developing the CIP, then how can we track it better from an engineering standpoint or other departments? And then, when it's all done, what's the best way we can get it into a fixed asset system from an accounting side to get all the depreciation? Now, maybe that's all wishful thinking, but that's what we'd love to be able to accomplish.
Thank you. Then on, actually, one of the projects that you mentioned, number 20 for the maker space at the library. Obviously, I would assume there'll be some ongoing costs for materials, equipment maintenance. Has there been a funding source set aside for that, or has there been a plan for perpetual upkeep?
I think you're absolutely right. An operating cost, some of that will have to come out of an operating budget-type thing. I know there's been some discussion about what are some funding sources to maybe get, not only building the co-lab, but what about the equipment that you're first going to put in there? You know, is there a good source as it relates to the Friends of the Group, you know, library that might be willing to do that? But you're right, there will be, as part of general operating costs, than the actual supplies. Now, one of the things I know the library's talked about, and when they had it in their strategic plan a few years ago, is, you know, library tends to think of things being free. You know, you go to the library and you can have free access to anything. One of the things they talked about is, we're probably not going to be able to have that with this. You know, people are going to have to pay for the supplies they use. So that's one of the things in this, when this is all done, they'll have to figure out what kind of, how are they going to do that fee structure? You know, what's the cost of the supply? And hopefully, that will offset then some of those costs.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I have, Project 22, Handicap Access Improvements. I'm just wondering, is it just that because these are CDBG funds, that it's only for one year? Were those just a specific set aside, or was, is there a reason this isn't ongoing?
Correct. We kind of, we used to have it ongoing from block grant funding, and we found out this past year that the block grant funding, maybe, well, I shouldn't say maybe, block grant funding cannot be used for some of those things, and so that's why we didn't continue as ongoing. What we'll have to figure out is, is there a different source? How are we going to do that? What's the need for all of those? And figure that out, but at least we'll be continuing, you know, with block grant, just finishing out the year with that. Is there anything more, Stephanie, I should add on that? Okay.
Is that, we just, it's always been that way, and we just realized it, or is it a change in the policy?
Well, I think, oh, go ahead.
What we learned during the audit that we received this summer was that, like, on the sidewalk project, for example, that they no longer were allowing us to just use the income of the property adjacent to, that's responsible for fixing the sidewalk, but it had to be an area-low and moderate-income analysis that we needed to do, so it just makes it so much more cumbersome to run the program. What we're looking at on the handicap ones, those, actually, we talked to the Housing Commission last week about this particular item, and whether we should go back and ask HUD if we would still be able to just do it on that individual property owner's income on the handicap access, instead of thinking that it might be the same way as a sidewalk program where we'd have to do more. So we're investigating that particular one just a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in council or P&amp;Z? Mr. Green?
Mr. Speaker, Director Ridenbeck, I have just a few questions for you. Looking at the, being a new person, looking at the CIP, is, for the listings, are they in priority order of what would potentially be scaled back, or is there a-
On the actual big sheet?
Right, for how they're listed.
Actually, here's our scientific way of how they're ordered. It's by department. So we do the Finance and Business Operations, then we do Community Development, then we do Municipal Operation Program, and then there's Public Safety.
Okay.
And some of that's just, because that's an easy way for staff to find projects.
All right, terrific. And then, do we have an acceleration option for Green Hill and Main if we find from the Public Safety Building's construction? Looks like that's supposed to end around FY '19. So with the finish for Green Hill and Main being in 2021, if we find that there's a need to accelerate because of safety concerns, or do we have that option of bringing it forward, or is it fairly locked in to scheduling based on your projections?
Sure. Well, I think, I think this is why it goes back to that the CIP is always a planning document. It's always changing when we know more. And I think then it's also, there's been times we've come back to the council and said, "Okay, we're going to have to readjust, you know, funding." Or maybe by the time we do next year's CIP, we're going to know more, and then things are adjusted. So I think the answer to your question is yes, we can. Now, how it's set right now, it's, the funding is set for everything on here and how we're using it, so something else would have to change to be able to do that. Does that make sense? And did you have any, I don't know if John or you have any other thing about that project?
One other thing that relates to the timing on that particular intersection is related to the construction work happening at Highway 58 and Viking Road. So we want to be cautious about what intersections might be closed and other things happening when there might be local traffic going other ways due to that construction. So that's one consideration that we had in mind as well. And that is also then why we're looking at potentially, are there any temporary measures that might be possible there? I think- I think Director Ridenbeck mentioned how we're looking at that and want to bring forward some recommendations to the council on that to help with the timing, too.
Great. And then my last question was with the pickleball courts, 158. It says in the plan that it's going to be built over the existing basketball courts, which then, are those, is that going to be funded elsewhere in order to replace those, or is there a plan for those courts that we'll need to?
Sure. Mark, did you have anything?
Basketball courts, you see that right now are basically an asphalt court that are uneven, so we're going to take this opportunity to relocate them, and we have enough money in our general operating budget to probably pour the concrete at about a $5,000 cost.
Okay. Anything further from comments or council?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Jennifer, actually, this probably is for Stephanie or John, but signalized intersection upgrade is number 186. We set aside $200,000 every year for this, and I'm curious how many signals that allows us to work on.
Well, actually, Brian might be the best person to answer this, but my guess is, is it's probably only going to be about one main intersection that we could do? I mean, it depends what you're doing at the intersection, I realize, but.
What we've done with that CIP project is, in the past, we funded that to replace controllers, to replace signals if we do small intersections or things like that. It isn't for one specific intersection or one specific project. It's for accumulation of different projects that may come up. For example, Hudson Road, we did, we did some work out there in coordination, and we had to retrofit some of them cabinets out there, and we use that kind of money for that. So, typically, it's, it's a funding source for all of traffic operations and what they're doing throughout the year.
To make sure that funding's there.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And that funding you probably noted, Mark, was our road use tax.
Yep.
That, that's eligible cost under that.
Sure. I had a couple other questions, mainly regarding street projects, and I guess for a little more clarification on South Main and Green Hill, the course of action at this point is we're going to look for some stopgap temporary type measures, and then final design is not set for '20 or '21 at this point?
Correct.
We still need to have that discussion?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to look at some, some possible temporary things, hopefully inexpensive that we could do if it gets expensive, then it's looking at more of a final design in 2020 and construction in 2021. The other thing that we've discussed is that there is kind of a need to look at Green Hill as a corridor, and we're talking about putting on an RFP to do a study of the whole corridor with, you know, with kind of the first item in that RFP is to take a near-term look, meaning what could we do this year, at Green Hill and Main. But then also, we just had a question, a call from the courier question about, have we considered a roundabout at that location? Well, I think it's been brought up and, as an idea, we really don't know, is, is that really a realistic possibility? So, that's something that this RFP could potentially look at is, what will this corridor look like? What are its needs? Signalized intersections, roundabouts. So, it will address kind of this upcoming year needs at the location if it's, if it's deemed reasonable and it makes sense. If it's something that, you know, would, would cost quite a bit, and it would be throwaway cost for the final design, that would be something that, you know, we would certainly discuss and bring forward, and that would be up to, I guess, probably you all to decide if it would be worth doing or not. So, that's kind of the plan for Green Hill and Main, and I think the corridor of Green Hill itself.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a follow-up on that before you leave. What is your timetable for temporary improvements? Can we get some in next year versus the long-range plan, looking at all of Green Hill?
As far as just a specific location of Green Hill and Main?
Yeah.
I think there's potential there. There are some challenges with, I mean, we really need, we need some help to take a look at that intersection. If you would, you know, say, for example, put down some temporary pavement, are there utilities in the way? Could we realistically do that? We're, we're potentially going to look at some possible phasing or timing changes to the location, but does that make sense? Because the way the current mast arms are lined up, you know, in one direction, they're just, they're not long enough to put a signal head for a protected permissive left, so would it make sense, would we have to do a longer mast arm? And, and that's a fairly good expense, and then if, if we decide in 2020 for the design, 2021, that would be throwaway cost, you know, we might not want to spend $40,000 or whatever we come up with, but that's something we're going to be looking at, looking at possibly getting an RFP out in the next month and then, and go from there. We really need somebody to take more of a hard, detailed look at it to see what, what could we do for this coming year.
That's my concern, because we have the possibility of new developments going on in Green Hill and South Main. Can we coordinate temporary improvements with that development?
Potentially, but something we'll certainly look at.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah. Oh, I don't have any further questions regarding that, but if I can have, I guess I just wanted to say thanks to the folks on P&amp;Z for doing a lot of the hard work that comes to us, and you guys, the work you're doing makes it a lot easier for us. You're asking the right questions, and thank you for that. And then I guess regarding Green Hill, I'm glad to hear we're doing a, we're going to look at the whole corridor, because I, we've got a beautiful stretch of road in University Avenue, and I know that the roundabout discussion is dreaded, but at the same time, we're creating University Avenue on Green Hill Road, and with the pace of things that's happening out there, I hope we give that some thought at some point.
Thank you. Anything further from the P&amp;Z, y'all certainly expand? Yes, Leanne?
I have a question on number 114, which is, let's see. Guess I'll get to the right page here. Community Development Planning and Community Services Regarding Zoning Ordinances. I see we have $240,000 there for fiscal year '18, nothing later. Can you talk to me about that, especially in lieu of all of the discussion of C3 and R4 and the developments downtown and parking, et cetera?
The zoning ordinance has been something that we've been wanting to get to for quite a few years. It actually was a recommendation out of our comprehensive plan adopted in 2012, and so we've had it on the docket, wanted to get to it. We've had a number of staff changes that have impacted our ability to get to that, but we would like to get that kicked off soon.
Thank you.
And, and it would be comprehensive citywide. I kind of characterize it as an overhaul, so it's a rewrite of the ordinance and adopting new vision consistent with our comprehensive plan and considering some of the challenges that we've had.
Okay, and I have another question, and that's about the parking items. What I see in the CIP, we have $50,000 a year for redoing parking lots, looking at parking lots, and then I see where we might have to consider paid parking, but again, because of all the discussion going on with four-story buildings on Second Street and the three-story on West First, when exactly are we going to get to, I would say, a serious discussion about parking in related to? Because I, I understand we need, we need to redo our, some of our parking lots, and we need to resurface them, and they do need work. We need wayfinding, I do understand that, but where's the comprehensive task study force on parking?
Well, the parking plan that was put together with a task force that spent a lot of time and effort on that, as you know, Leanne has a number of recommendations that include short-term, medium-term, long-term recommendations. And so, what you find in the CIP is actually consistent with what are the medium-term recommendations from that parking plan, and also consistent with discussions that I've had with Community Main Street's executive committee in talking about the items that we see coming forward here, what do we need to handle, that this is really a partnership for all of us. So, we're starting with these items. We think that, we started off with those short-term plans being the education outreach, which I think the task force members, Community Main Street, city staff helped with brochures and things, too. I think everybody's put in a big effort on that, the businesses downtown, lots of effort in, in having some information available, so everybody's worked really hard on that. So, we'll move on to these midterm items from the plan and starting to get some signage out there and better awareness about where the parking lots are, because maybe they just don't know, once that one's full, where to go. Those types of things, we're hoping to handle here, and then we'll move on to the long-term recommendations, of which the entire parking area and how it functions as a system and what needs to happen to the system as a whole piece will be discussed.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, again, folks, thanks for the joint meeting, taking more time out of your evenings, and do appreciate all that you do for the P&amp;Z commission. Appreciate that. Moving on quickly to item number two, is there a motion for bills and payroll, please? I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, motion carries. That'll wrap it up for the committee of the whole meeting this evening, and we will commence with our regular council meeting at the top of the hour. Thank you.